Welcome to the May 7th, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting. You'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you. We're gonna hope my voice holds out. Got a little laryngitis, so if it starts squeaking, just wait. I can't do anything about it. Okay, first up, we have approval of the agenda. I would ask for a motion and take a vote.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thanks, Jean. Thanks, Heidi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. We have a relatively long consent agenda, and I would like to read the items through that. On, or A, minutes of the April 9th, 2025 District Board Meeting. B, renewal of non-provocationary faculty for 25-26. C, renewal of probationary faculty for 25-26. Revised policy faculty due process dismissal. E, repeal policy 3-150 institution partnerships. F, repeal policy 3-730 solicitation on campus. G, repeal policy 3-900 public information. H, repeal policy 4-801 faculty reduction in force. And the two new ones, I, new policy 408 flags and outdoor displays. And policy 524, reduction in force. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consensus agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ginny.
Second thought.
Thanks, Heidi. All those in favor say aye. Next up is public comment. No public comment today. Next up from that, we have our presentations for excellence today, Shannon McCaslin, Dean of Students.
Yay, good afternoon, board. We are just, what, nine days until commencement? And I, woo, it's coming fast, isn't it? I have the awesome privilege of introducing you to one of our rock star graduates. In fact, Isaac Morales will be walking across two graduate stages this month. That's because he's concurrently enrolled at Ames and at Colorado Early College. In addition, you can see on the screen, he's a student athlete at Roosevelt High School as well. And if that wasn't enough, Isaac has also served as the Campus Activities Student Director of Alcohol and Other Drug Prevention here at the college. And as my introduction to Isaac today, I'm gonna tell you a short story, cuz it really wowed me. As I've gotten to know him, I learned this one. In the fall, he enrolled in Calculus I. And in his Associate of Science degree and later his Architecture degree at CU, he doesn't need to take Calculus. Rather, he enrolled in the class because he wanted to get to the highest level of math possible. Who does that, Isaac? Is what I said. Anyway, midway through the semester in the fall, his test grades were not at the level he would expect of himself. To put it simply, he was struggling. And during a meeting with the professor, he was told the only way to earn an A in the course, which is what he expects of himself in every course, he would need to score perfectly on the last three exams. So I was waiting with bated breath on this story at the end of fall, and guess what? He dug in deeper. He found more learning resources to supplement the class learning. He scored 100% on the next two, perfect scores. And then he got to the final exam. And he, imagine, he didn't pull off perfection. He landed with his first college B. And but here's what I love about Isaac. In the fall, he said to me, I'm taking Calculus II in the spring. And I was like, again, really? And so I just asked him, just now, just now. And he just got his final exam grade back. He scored a perfect 100% in Calc II, and he's ending with an A+ in the class. Can we just be like, are you kidding me? So I thought y'all would enjoy that, and I thought you'd enjoy hearing more about Isaac's experience here on campus.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Shannon, for that introduction. Up on the screen are just some of my hobbies and interests. I really like to do all sorts of things, from figure drawing to playing pretty much any sport possible. Up there is also a picture of me and my wonderful family. But today, I'll be sharing my experience of what it is like to be a concurrent enrollment student here at Ames Community College. So a little bit about my background, I've been at Ames for two years now and am a senior in high school. Before Ames, I was homeschooled from kindergarten all the way up until my junior year of high school. Making the transition from homeschooling to college was a big step, especially since I had never even attended a traditional school before. Ames was one of my first times I experienced a teacher classroom setting. And I was still very young at the time, so in my first year, I was more timid than most. Fortunately, I wasn't your stereotypical awkward homeschooler. I could hold a conversation and relate to people fairly well. But still, that first year for me was just a time of adjustment, where I was just trying to find where I could fit in and how I could get involved. However, getting involved was more challenging than I expected. As a younger student especially, I quickly realized how different my life was from most of my peers. While they were navigating careers in parenthood, I was still balancing high school, still focused on maintaining a high GPA and on how well I performed at soccer games and track meets. My days were split between college coursework, high school sports, and a job, with constant commutes between Ames Community College and Roosevelt High School. This initiated a divide between the two. I felt as though it wasn't my place to get involved at Ames because I wasn't technically a college student in some people's eyes, even at the time when I was taking 19 credits a semester. It felt like others might not trust me or take me seriously because I was barely 16. And so at the high school, I was succeeding in sports by earning achievements and leadership positions on the team. At Ames, going into my second year, I was still only a passive observer, going to classes and then going home. At first, I believed I would only be able to succeed in one or the other. It was either focus on my last year of high school sports to maximize the results I wanted or to further my engagement at Ames with clubs and college academics. Then at Ames, when an opportunity for the competitive student leader positions opened, I took a chance and applied and was hired in the Student Life Department as a Campus Activities Programmer for Substance Use and Recovery. For me at the time, substance use was a very unfamiliar subject. But because my supervisors and student life entrusted me with this position and believed that I could succeed, I put in all that I could for the position, researching, attending conferences, and seeking out help so that I could fulfill the position's expectations. Through this position, as a Campus Activities Programmer, I've gotten to be about as involved as you can be on campus. Campus Activities Programmers oversee and plan events using student fees to give back to the students. In this position, I've had the chance to plan and host events like Mocktails and Student Resources, THC Education, Colors of Recovery, Flourish and Thrive, as well as others. Programs designed to educate students about substance use and increase overall student engagement on campus. I had finally found the outreach I desired in this position by being able to host an event with some upwards of 100 students attending. However, even without as big turnouts for some events, my job is to outreach on a more personal level with students, connecting with them one-on-one for as little time as I might see them for. Because our goal is to help them get involved and create a more welcoming, engaging campus culture. I went from striving to get involved on campus to now getting to help students get involved at their campus. Despite the chaos of having two different roles and the difficulties of balancing college and high school with the perception that I might only be able to succeed in one, I found a way to give 100% of whatever I had left to both. And now, as I am preparing to graduate from college and high school, I can't help but be excited to walk across the stage to conclude high school and the start of my college journey. I'm excited for my future at CU Boulder and proud to not only be leaving Ames with a degree but with many lasting connections that will help me in continuing my education. Proud of, I am proud of achievements, whether that be highlighted as Student of the Month or winning intramural volleyball games at the Ames Perk, and proud to be leaving with an overall amazing experience here. I am proud of the work I've put in and thankful for everyone who has helped me along the way. Thank you.
I get to give it to you, you need to keep it. That's really important. On behalf of the trustees, Dr. Bornstein, we need to congratulate you. You are the epitome of the type of student that we want at Ames Community College. You're somebody who comes here to strive not only to be academically successful, but as evidenced by both your high school and college career, you wanna be part of everything that you are being, participating in, excuse me, and is something you should be very proud of. And you said that, I know that everybody in this room is really, really proud of you, and you need to be truly excited as you walk across both stages and run at the state track meet here in a few weeks. That's really, really exciting. My only concern is that you're going to school in Boulder. You still have a chance to go to school in Fort Collins. So I think, I think we can strive to do that. I bet we can find somebody to help here. But on behalf of all of us here, we're all excited for you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Isaac. Thank you. Thanks, Shannon. Great story. 19 credits, you made me cringe. Next up, we have our representatives to the board. First up would be our AFA for faculty. They are looking to fill those positions, and so we won't have a report on that today. But we do have David Mott from our Ames Staff Association.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Shock, members of the board, Dr. B, Cabinet, colleagues. I guess first, before I start, I'd like to, as a proud father of five homeschool students, I know none of my kids are that stereotype, so I definitely think the stereotype's changing. So I think, you know, intelligent, cogent, articulate, sociable, high-performing, I think that's the new stereotype for homeschool students. So, Isaac, good job, buddy. Keep it up. All right, jumping in, it's hard to believe we're already here. It's already the end of the year. You know, it's been gone so fast. I know I can speak for everybody, that time has been flying. So I wanna jump in. The theme for my presentation today is recognitions. Yeah, but before I jump into that, I wanna start with just a quick highlight of the last event from last month. The, like, it's the recognition event, the staff appreciation popcorn event, that's always very popular at, I remember it's outnumbered, several hundred bags of popcorn were distributed, I think 30 somewhat different flavors. There was like a cheeseburger and nachos flavor and all kinds of stuff, so if any of you didn't get that, you missed out. So look for that next year. All right, and then I did wanna highlight one upcoming event. This is totally new. We don't normally do a lot of ASA stuff over the summer, but we're floating the idea, and right now, we're proposing a, what can I call it, the ASA Grill and Chill, June 26th, somewhere probably near Student Commons. We don't, working out all the details, but it'll be a lunch that ASA will provide for staff members Thursday, the 26th. So staff members, look out for more info on that coming soon. Okay, all right, I wanted to jump into some recognitions. I just got this yesterday. Isabel Wolf was selected to be a recipient for the Impact Award from Thompson School District. And so I believe she was actually awarded that this morning. There was a ceremony. So I wanted to highlight that from Isabel on behalf of the Thompson School District. So good job, Isabel. And then ripples, there are a lot of ripples in your packet, and I just wanna highlight a couple of names because they appeared multiple times. Lena Sandoval and Amanda Edwards both received multiple ripples this month, so congratulations to both of them. And then I wanted to pause this, spend a little bit more time than normal this month because I mentioned last month that we have elections right now for ASA leadership. And so obviously, if we're electing for open positions, that means we have outgoing members from the leadership team. So I wanted to quickly take a moment to highlight those members who are departing and want to appreciate them. So I'll list some names and what their role has been. So Natalia Delgado is our Fort Lupton rep. Chris Gomez was our treasurer. McMurphy was secretary. Aaron Miyoshi was our part-time rep, and Laura Flood was our president-elect. And so the first four were all multi-year, multi-term members, have been serving for a long time, you know, multiple term, multiple years. So lots of experience there, lots of contributions that they've made to ASA over the years. So absolutely wanted to recognize them and thank them for that experience. So Laura was new to the team this year and will not be returning. So I wanted to thank Laura as well for her contribution, very significant. And with that, I wanted to remind, I mentioned last month, but nominations are still open. You do not have to, you have to be a staff member to serve on a leadership team. You don't have to be a staff member to nominate a staff member for leadership team. So putting it out there, the link for the nominations will be in the daily tomorrow. So if you see that, and again, think of someone who would be interested or fit well in that team, please, please let us know on that. And lastly, for me, I just, since it is our last meeting for the year, I wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude to the board and, you know, to everybody that has contributed to ASA with last year, and this was my first year being involved on the leadership team, and jumping right into the president role, you know, maybe a little bit of a learning curve, a little bit of jumping out of the nest, you know, or whatever. So I learned a lot, and I'm excited for next year in the direction that ASA is heading. And I definitely wanted to thank the board and for this setting and the opportunity for me to share. Appreciate it. So thank you.
Thanks, David. Any questions or comments? Thank you for your work and preparation, and I will tell you, I remember your first meeting to today. And, you know, we all grow in different ways, and I just wanna congratulate you as well of the great work you're doing. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have our SGA, our Student Government Association, Jeff Thatch.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Chair Shock, Dr. B, faculty, staff, and my fellow students. Before I get started, I'd like to invite SGA Vice President for Administrative Services, Mariah Crawford, to read a statement from SGA.
I'm just gonna stand on my tippy toes cuz I don't wanna mess with that. I was not blessed in the height department. Good afternoon, Chair Shock, members of the board, and Dr. Bornstein. I'm writing to bring a concerning situation to your attention regarding one of the approved vendors on Ames Community College's approved vendor list. Recently, a student leader from Student Life organized an incredible award ceremony recognizing the contribution of Ames Clubs. As part of the preparation, the student placed an order for custom awards through Award Alliance, a vendor listed on our approved vendor list. One of the awards was for Best Affinity Group, which was to be given to LGBTQ affinity group. However, Award Alliance refused to fulfill this particular award, citing that their religious faith belief doesn't allow them to promote the LGBTQ movement. This refusal caused unnecessary stress for the student leader, who had to pivot quickly to an alternate vendor, Four Imprint, under tight time constraints to ensure the awards would be ready for the event. When this issue was brought before the Ames Student Government Association, we voted to no longer use Award Alliance for any purchases funded through Student Life or student fees as their actions are in direct conflict with our values and those of the college. Ames Community College proudly upholds the values of authenticity and truthfulness, community, equity and professional respect, inclusiveness, performance excellence, and effectiveness. A vendor's refusal to serve a recognized student group based on sexual orientation stands in stark contrast to these values, particularly equity and inclusiveness. Allowing this vendor to remain on the approved vendor list sends a message to LGBTQ students and allies that they are not fully supported or represented by institutions that serve them. Therefore, we respectfully request that Ames Community College remove Award Alliance from its approved vendor list and instead prioritize vendors like Four Imprint that align with and uphold the college's core values. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mariah.
Gotta get tall again.
All right, happy May. We are officially at the end of another year and another graduation around the corner. The buzz on campus is real, and members of our student body are pouring their energy into final projects and exams, pushing through to the finish line with that familiar mix of stress, determination, and hope. Now, I know this is a busy time for everyone, so I promise to keep this short, just a few words of reflection and a whole lot of gratitude. Before I go any further, I'd like to invite any members of the Student Life team who are present here today to please stand. There they are. All right, these are, go ahead, yeah, give it up. These are just a few of the changemakers, the ones who show up early, stay late, and make this college more than just a place to learn. This year, they've gone above and beyond to uplift our students and expand what's possible. From pushing the menstrual equity project to the finish line and getting EGAL pad dispensers installed across our women's and all-gender bathrooms, offering students free, discreet access to period products, to forming a brand-new student parent group that gives students, who are also caregivers, a space to connect and build community. Your impact has been both powerful and deeply human. You guys can sit down. I'm not gonna make you stand up the whole time. You've added heart to our campus, and it shows in the details, like the newly-installed shadow box in the Student Commons, where graduates can leave their names on paper art marks, serving as a symbol of pride and a message to future students, you belong here, and you can do this too. To the SGA team, Mariah, Alicia, Camila, Ajid, David, and Noelia, thank you. Thank you for letting me serve as your president. It has been one of the greatest privileges of my life. I'm so proud of the work you've done, and I will miss you more than I can say. I also wanna thank our Campus Activities Programming Board members, Alex, Jen, Noelia, Isaac, Samuel, Cory, Emily, and Maria, as well as our ARC team, Anna, Chris, Charlene, and Antonio, for bringing students together in fun, inclusive, and meaningful ways. Your events remind us that connection matters and that joy is a vital part of the student experience. While it's hard to say goodbye to a team like this, I'm also incredibly excited for what's next. I look forward to working with next year's team, to watching new leaders grow, new ideas take shape, and new possibilities unfold. The future of student life at Ames is bright, and I can't wait to be a part of it. And to all of you, board members, Dr. B, faculty and staff, I look forward to continuing our work together next year to make Ames not just a great institution, but a great community. Thank you for your time, your support, and your belief in students like us. And we'll see you in August. Are there any questions?
Any questions? No. Again, thanks for all your work and dedication, Jeff. Okay, we'll move into our action items. First up is Action Item 7A, Fiscal Year 2025-26 Faculty Consultation Agreement with Chuck Jensen, our Vice President of Administrative Services, and John Mangen, sorry, I probably just butchered it. Building construction site management faculty.
Thank you, Chair Shock, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, Cabinet, colleagues. You have before you Action Item 7A. This is our Fiscal Year 25-26 Consultation Agreement. Each year, in accordance with Policy 210, consultations are held between representatives from the Ames Faculty Association, AFA, and college administration to address matters related to specific conditions of employment. As you'll notice, note in the memo included in this agreement are items related to salary increases, medical premiums paid by the college, and the fact that we're going to conduct a formal market assessment of faculty salaries during the 25-26 academic year. And also, faculty consultation will also discuss procedures related to personal leave hours for full-time faculty and a faculty-prepared plan to increase attendance at college-wide events. I'd like to express my gratitude to the team, administration, and the faculty that have participated. It's a, it's a committee that meets every couple of weeks. There's a lot of commitment of time from people, and so definitely my appreciation to them. Jeff Klein is the co-chair, and he's been a wonderful chair, co-chair for a number of years. And shout out to him also. At this point, I'll turn it over to John to share some thoughts from the faculty side of consultation. John?
Good afternoon to Chair Shock and the trustees. Again, as Chuck introduced me, John Mangen, I'm instructor in the Construction Management Program. Had the privilege to give a tour of the ATTC building for you a few weeks back. As Chuck mentioned, the consultation process, unique process here at Ames, the team is comprised of four faculty members, myself, Jeff Klein is co-chair, Allison Easley as our third faculty member, and we have a vacancy right now. And then four administration members, Deans Terry Anderson and Scott Reichel, Dr. Ailer, and of course Chuck. So as Chuck mentioned, a large part of what we did this year centered around the discussion of pay and different things like that. And we're, we're looking forward to continuing that conversation here in the upcoming year with more information, that being the pay analysis that is in the works. So Chuck said that we meet every few weeks. It's really at the behest of Chuck, so it's more weekly than bi-weekly, but it just depends on the workload and things like that. But it's a, it's a great team, and I mean that as the faculty side and the administration side as well.
The fiscal impact, of course, was included in the Salary and Benefits Presentation. And the administrative recommendation is approval of the Fiscal Year 25-26 Consultation Agreement. We'll stand for questions.
Any questions? The college and board have received legal advice to revise policy 210, the Faculty and Administration Consultation Procedure 210-01 Faculty Consultation. Therefore, the board will amend the consultation memo to add the revision of the policy 210 and Procedure 210-01 to the 2025-2026 work product, working directly with the college's legal counsel and completing this work no later than April 2026 through the regular college policy and procedure reformation process. Any other questions? If not, I would ask for a motion to amend the 2025-2026 Faculty Consultation Agreement as stated above. And I'm happy to read that again if you'd like me to, from a motion.
To approve the 2025 Faculty Consultation policy as you just explained.
As amended.
So it has amended, yes. Sorry to jump in, but we would need two separate actions. So trustee O'Hara, we would need you to make a motion to amend it as stated, and then a separate motion later to approve as amended. So your motion would need to be just to amend it.
Okay, I would revise my motion to approve the amended, the faculty consultation faculty consultation policy amendment.
Second. Would you like me to read it again? We good. Okay, all those in favor say aye on amending the consultation memo to add the revision.
Aye.
Thank you. And as Jerry said, we have a second action or motion is to accept, read this, approve the 2025-26 Faculty Consultation Agreement as amended.
I move to approve the 25, 2025-26 Consultation Agreement as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, and thank you for the consultation team. Okay, next up, we have 7B. We have Fiscal Year 2025-26 Budget Approval with Chuck Jensen.
I was gonna go sit down. Chair Shock, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, colleagues. You have before you Action Item 7B, the approval of the Fiscal Year 25-26 Budget. Happy to report that there is no changes since the presentation made at the previous work session. And so you have before you the proposed Fiscal Year 25-26 Budget. And the total, all funds is $222,885,000 and $22. And so administrative recommendation is to approve the Fiscal Year 25-26 Budget. And with that, I also want to, again, express my gratitude and hard work of the fiscal team, Paul Lind, Assistant Vice President, the rest of the fiscal the rest of the fiscal team, and all the departments across the college that worked hard as we put this budget together throughout the last number of months. And so I stand for any questions?
Any questions? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve as presented.
With great gratitude for all the work of the fiscal team and everyone that worked on this, I make a motion to approve the 2025-26 budget as presented.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Got a third. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Chuck. And next up, we have our fiscal year 2025-2026 appropriation with Chuck.
Chair Shock, members of the board, Dr. Morinstein, colleagues, you have before you Action Item 7C. This is required for CRS 22-44-103, that the Board of Trustees shall approve an appropriation for each fiscal year. For fiscal year 25 or 25-26, there's a little typo there, I apologize for that. For fiscal year 25-26, 222,885,022 is the appropriated to support the operations of the college, and that the college is authorized to make expenditures and incur obligations, the purpose therefore thereof. The appropriation will be revised if shortfalls occur in revenue projections and/or if changes occur in projected expenses. Administrative recommendation is recommend approval of the fiscal year 25-26 appropriation. Stand for questions.
Questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve Action Item 7C, the 2025-26 appropriation. Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks Chuck. Next up, we have Action Item 7D, our new Cloud Systems Administration Certificate with Dr. David Ailer, our VP of Academic Affairs.
Good afternoon Chair Shock, trustees, Dr. B, Cabinet, and guests. We are proposing a new Cloud Systems Administrative Certificate. Cloud computing is a field that has grown considerably in the last five years. The CIS department has had an introduction to cloud computing course for five years, and now we find that employers are wanting our students to have additional skills related to this topic. Cloud computing, excuse me, basically is defined as the delivery of computing services, including servers, storage, databases, networking, software, analytics, and intelligence over the internet or the cloud to offer faster innovation, flexible resources, and economies of scale. The administrative recommendation is to approve new Cloud Systems Administrative Certificate. Now stand for questions.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the recommendation to initiate the Cloud System Administration Certificate.
Thank you. Is there a second? I seconded up. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have several information items for the events calendar and upcoming work session with Jerry Harvey, our board liaison.
Thank you Chair Shock. You'll find in your packet the list of upcoming events. I wanted to update one of them for you because we've got another RSVP for it, but for the groundbreaking ceremony on May the 20th for the Student Health Center, just to add an RSVP there for, it shows there trustee O'Hara and trustee Tresswell as well as trustee Wendell. So those are the RSVPs received for that event. And I have a new event that is not on here because I just received it yesterday, so it will be in your Friday weekly email. But it is for the United Way. Pull up the information here. United Way Community Leaders Luncheon on May the 30th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Downtown Doubletree here in Greeley. And there are enough tickets for two trustees and a plus one. So again, I'll send out this information here Wednesday or your Friday email, but I wanted to give it to you today as well. Next up. Yes, trustee O'Hara.
I thought you were asking.
Yes, if you can, you can.
I'll do it then.
Perfect. I'll put you down for that. And trustee Tresswell. All right, next, we'll move on to the annual agenda. Since we're on a summer break after today's meeting, we'll actually move into item B here and just talk about our June retreat. So we have the June retreat scheduled for the board, June 3rd and 4th. So we have a two-day retreat. Both days will start at 8:30 and go until 4:00 PM. From 8:30 to 9:00 each day, it'll be kind of the time to come in and get settled, get some light snacks, and everything will start promptly at 9:00 AM each day. The first day is going to be with Dr. Morinstein and Cabinet to go over higher ed trends as well as the 2024 to 2027 Strategic Plan Year One wrap-up. So that's going to be the main focus of day one. After the first day, there will be a kind of a social event afterward here on the third floor balcony. So you'll be staying afterward for some heavy hors d'oeuvres out on the balcony. And then day two, so June 4th will be facilitated by Dr. Cindy Miles. She facilitated last summer as well. So she'll be facilitating day two, which will be focused on the board's formal self-evaluation as well as the president/CEO's formal evaluation. And then from there, going into planning for the next year or so, president's goals as well as the board priorities for the coming year. That brings me into my reminder. Last Friday, you probably received an email from ACCT with the links to complete those evaluations, your board self-evaluations and the CEO evaluation. So if you have not done so yet, please follow those links and complete both of those before date right, before May the 18th. That is when the portal is going to close. So if you've not done so yet, please complete those surveys before May 18th, and I'll send out reminders periodically as well. Any questions? All right. Yes, yeah, but both days are scheduled to go until four o'clock.
Thank you Jerry.
Of course.
Next up, we have our CEO President's Report with Dr. Leah Morinstein.
Thank you Chair Shock. First question in your packet, you have lots of materials associated with highlights from divisions. Are there any questions on those materials that our cabinet members could answer for you? Hearing none, moving on. This is the time of year we would like to hear from the Ames Administrative Group led by Chair Terry Anderson, Dean of Allied Health Wellness, and co-chair of the Ames Administrators Group. So Dean Anderson.
Yes. Good afternoon Chair Shock, trustees, Dr. Morinstein. I'm glad that you were able to have me today to give you kind of a year-end update and wrap up of what we were able to do this year in the Ames Administrator Group. This is our second year. We had our last meeting of the year yesterday. And we all had some time to reflect it and feel like it was another really successful year as this is a newer group. But a really important group as we are kind of tasked and charged with creating and stewarding the positive culture throughout the institution. And it is a great opportunity for us as administrators and leaders to come together and really get an understanding of where we are at as an institution. This year's focus was on the impact of appreciation, gratitude, and recognition at the college and what that really meant. What mechanisms do we have to be able to do that for our teams? As we all know, there are lots of amazing things that are happening at Ames, lots of amazing accomplishments that are happening, and lots of amazing people that are doing those things throughout the entire institution. So how are we as leaders, how are we as an institution are doing to be able to recognize and appreciate all the individuals that are doing a lot of those things? And so we really took a lot of time this year to analyze that. Took a lot of time to figure out what are some of those formal mechanisms or informal mechanisms that we have to do that? And are there some opportunities for us to kind of grow? Are there opportunities for us to try to make some changes? So we can better continue to recognize all the great things that are happening. And so we made a couple of small changes, made a couple of small recommendations throughout the college to make some of those formal mechanisms a little bit more robust and a little bit more utilized throughout the college. And so we're really excited to be able to see how some of those things will continue to grow in years to come. And so the last couple of months of the year, our last couple of meetings, we took some time to really explore what we may want to take on as what we call a learning agenda item for the group for next year. We are really trying to look at as in regards to the idea of kind of stewarding positive culture throughout the college. What are both some things that could potentially just be great leadership and learning opportunities, but at the same time understanding kind of the current environment and the material of the college and what may be some timely items or initiatives that we can learn together on. And so some of the things that we've been looking at or exploring are concepts around change management, concepts around cultivating psychological safety for ourselves and our teams and individuals throughout the college. And then also, we're looking into the idea of we have an amazing opportunity with our speaker series coming up and some amazing speakers that are coming in, and how can we maybe piggyback off some of those themes and do some learning around that. And so we're really excited for the opportunities we have to continue to grow and develop as a group. That's one of the funnest things that I enjoy the most with this group is just the ability to get together with other administrators and learn and grow together. And so we are, we take a couple of months off during the summer for the chairs to get together and plan out the next year. We have a transition in chairs kind of every year. And so we're in a tri-chair model. This year, we had our past chair, which was Zach McFarland. He'll be rolling off. This year, I will roll into the role of past chair. Dr. Andrea de Cosmo will roll into the role of chair. And then our incoming chair will be Dr. Larry Bukowski for the upcoming year. And so we're excited. We want to continue to grow and continue to see some really great things that this group will be able to do for the college. And we truly thank you and appreciate all the support that you all provide for us as we continue to move forward with this group. So any questions?
Does it look like it?
All right.
Nice work.
Yep, thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Dr. David Ailer, Vice President of Academic Affairs, to come up and talk about Public Safety, Education, and Transportation Division Overview. And I believe this is the final academic overview for this year. So you've managed to you've managed to overview them all, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Shock, board, Dr. B, guests. This is my pleasure to share with you information about the PSET Division, Public Safety, Education, Transportation. This division is led by Dr. Susan Moreland, and she has several of our department leads with us here today. So that if there are hard questions that I can't answer, they'll be able to step in and bail me out. Okay. So in this division, we have 14 programs. We have actually a bachelor's degree, 18 associate degrees, and 52 certificates. We have 27 full-time faculty, 307 part-time faculty, and 29 part-time staff. The headcount, I were really happy to show this in all of the division reports, but we're up over 21% from last spring in headcount, and we're up over 13% in student full-time equivalent from 2024. So doing some really good work and having good expansion within the division. We're also in this division pioneering excellence in several areas. We are the first public safety bachelor's degree in Colorado. We also lead Colorado in unmanned aircraft systems, AAS degree enhanced. Let's see, it is air traffic collegiate training initiative is what that stands for. Beyond visual line of sight. And we are considered the top flight school in Colorado. So we're very proud of that. When students go on the web to look at flight schools, we show up there nationally as one of the very best, and we we think we're the best in Colorado and the nation. Exclusive in Colorado is our Ford Asset Automotive Program, where we partner with Ford dealerships and we're training students to graduate with advanced certifications in the Ford Training Program. And the International Fire Services Accreditation Congress accreditation is a high point for us being a leader in Colorado. There's a national, actually international competition called Skills USA. And we have won that in automotive collision for many, many years. This year, our Unmanned Aircraft Systems Team is also advancing to national competitions. So we're very proud of our students and our faculty and programs in success in Skills USA competitions. The third bullet on the slide here is innovations and partnerships, and there's a large list here. And I have information if you want me to go into detail on these, but you can see there's a variety of organizations that we participate and partner with. They cross all of the programmatic areas in the division and illustrate our excellence and innovation in our programming and the quality of our instruction in our programs. And I'd be happy to expound on any of those if you would like, or all of them if you would like.
Any questions? It's impressive. The numbers just are staggering to me.
We have fantastic faculty and staff at Ames.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leah, and congratulations to our PSET Division. Making his way to the podium is Zach McFarland, Chief Marketing and Communication Officer. This is also a time of the year where we offer a marketing and communication annual report and auditing report. And so I'll turn it over to Zach. Thank you.
Chair Shock, members of the board, Dr. B, Jerry, good to see you and I appreciate the time. It is my annual Markham update, and I'm always the last person between my last presentation and the board between us and essentially summer break. So I like to throw as many slides as you as possible, and that would be, I think, 22 or 23 today. So I'll try to keep your meeting efficient, Chair Shock, and get through this. Markham, four areas are in Markham, marketing and web, communications, events, and brand. Marketing and web, we think about students like Isaac. That's kind of the purpose of marketing and web, right, is to make sure that we're out there reaching out to prospective students and creating opportunity for them to work through the funnel. that we're out there reaching out to prospective students and creating opportunity for them to work through the funnel and end up here at Ames. That's marketing. Communications, that goal is going to be awareness and perception. Really making sure that our community knows about Ames, knows everything that we have going on through press releases, publications, you know, things like that. And so that's the the function of communications. Events, everything from the Welcome Center, bringing in the external community here to the Welcome Center and to the college at large to it running internal events, managing our room reservation reservation system and things like that. And then the brand really keeps everybody, you know, aware of our brand guidelines. And then when Dr. B asks, turn our turns our logo into a pickle or whatever. I'll be for Aifit right now. So really just looking at our brand and making sure that we're adhering to those guidelines and keeping the brand consistent. So that when people interact with it, they know what to expect, which is a really fun job for them. Marketing and web, we continue to maintain a a a large website by Google standards, right? We're looking at one point six, seven million sessions over the course of the year, five point five million page views, seven hundred and sixty thousand total users. This is each of those are a little bit up from last year, which continues to just show that we're continuing to hone in our strategy, especially with search engine optimization and running more digital advertising that's very specific to our web and getting people to the appropriate web pages. Degree pages outside of our homepage, degree-specific pages continue to be where most of our traffic ends up to to kind of take a look at everything that that Ames offers. Web actions, when we think about the web, it only really matters if somebody's doing something when they when they get to a page. Otherwise, it's just a vanity project, right? And what we've seen here are pretty good results across the board, exactly what we're looking for. You know, ninety-five thousand total actions. We've got forty-eight thousand people clicking on the Apply Now button, especially on degree specific pages. Start a resume application clicks, thirty thousand, twenty-seven hundred and seventy request information form fills. And I'm going to get to some pretty exciting stuff on that, which is a phrase I never thought I would say it's. But it's it is good, exciting stuff on request for information that we've been working toward for a long time. And we see that plus fifty percent there, which comes with a lot of intentionality on the marketing and web team's part. And I'm going to show you that. And then catalog clicks, thirteen thousand, you know, down seven. That's not something that we're gonna you know, worry about until it becomes an issue. Really, we're trying to push them to more specific areas of the site. So it's not super surprising to the web team to see maybe that that catalog is down because we're 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 really pushing very specific search traffic on degrees themselves with key terms. Looking at Google Ads, Google, we all know continues to be probably the the main place that we go when we're looking for anything. The the marketing and web team continues to invest more money into our Google accounts. And and this is all consistent with what you see and just increasing that investment, right? Seven million impressions, we're up twenty percent on impressions, twenty-three percent on clicks. That means that they're not just getting impressions, right? But people are actually clicking through those ads, which means that we're matched up pretty well from what the ad is to what they're actually searching for and are interested in. And then once they get there, they're converting on the site. We can track all the way down to that. They're actually taking action on the site as well. And these are really good. This flows really nicely from impression to clicks to conversions, exactly what we would be expecting there when we think about people matriculating through a standard marketing. Out of home and print advertising, none of that's to say that we don't focus on out of home and print, even though we we have increased our investment in digital. We're we're still, we're still out there. You probably see us on the billboards, you know, when you're driving, you know, down two fifty-seven and stuff. And and we want to maintain a very robust presence in all channels because, you know, we really do have a range of students that are you know, everywhere from Google all the way to driving down and and seeing a billboard that says, you know, ninety-one percent of people graduate Ames debt free. We've got a lot of feedback on that one as attention grabbing and and something that people go and research. But we're looking at, you know, eighty-six million out-of-home impressions a year. Three hundred and forty-six, you know, breaking that down, three hundred and forty-six thousand coming from Spotify, two point six in more traditional radio channels, KUNC, things like that. One point three million in TV. We we hear a lot of feedback. People have been seeing our TV commercial more and more regularly. And so, you know, we continue to, we we started that about two years ago. We continue to just kind of insert ourselves into TV and figure out the right time slots for people to see and and to get more traction on that. Movie theaters, I hear about movie theaters quite a bit. In fact, in the listening, the cabinet listening tour, someone said that they saw an Ames ad and stood up and clapped right before their movie because they were so excited to see it. And then, you know, print advertising, that's everything from, you know, newspapers to very trade-specific magazines that we we kind of push Ames content to. So we still are out there very heavily in print and and out-of-home advertising. CRM, this is the exciting part I mentioned earlier. A couple of years back, if you were on the website and you 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 found welding and you said, hey, I want to, I don't know, I'm gonna, let me request a little bit more information. On any of those programs, your experience would have been anything from over-communication to to maybe even nothing, right? We didn't have a really solid process. There was a lot of opportunity for growth in how we communicate to people who are literally raising their hand and saying, hey, I'm really interested in what you have to offer, and I'm specifically interested in this thing. About a year ago, we selected a new CRM, Customer Relationship Management System called Element Four Fifty-One. Members of our team and SACE worked together to implement that over the year. Part of that implementation over the year from a marketing perspective was the creation of drip campaigns. And what a drip campaign is, is an automated email campaign where when you click request information and fill in your information, you all know this, you're going to get, you get a series of emails that then communicates, you know, different information to you to just keep you interested, right, in in what in what we're selling, which in these instances primarily are degree programs. And so this is actually data just from January. We just launched this. And so from January on on our website, we've had nine hundred and fifty-two total requests for information received. You know, six hundred and sixty-two hundred and forty to total RFI emails have been sent. Those all required, there's some AI here, so it's not as complicated as it was in the past. But that required people to sit down and custom create email content for every degree program. And in a drip campaign, different levels of content with different highlights to keep students, prospective students continuing to roll through the funnel. So this is a monumental task, and we start to see the results. Top three programs for people, you know, to to express that interest, healthcare, aviation, EMS. And then our open rates are right around twenty-eight percent on those emails. Industry average, it depends on where you look, thirty to forty. So that's a good indicator for us that we're we're close. And we need to maybe look at that content a little bit to make sure that we're we're matched up with what people are actually looking for, which would increase open rates. You start tweaking headlines and things like that to see if they'll, you know, if we can tweak how many people open. And then click-through rates, so going from the email to the site and doing something about fourteen percent. And and the industry average for click-through rates in this realm is about six to fifteen. So we're sitting really, really good on click-through rates. So this has been a monumental initiative in partnership with, say, soon-to-be Student Affairs. And and it's exciting to start to see that now students end up on the site, they they get to a degree page, they see really relevant content that we've worked on through the website redevelopment. They're going to see a degree-specific video, a student testimonial, and I'll show you an example of one of those in a minute. And then they're going to be able to continue matriculating through that content to either apply or request information, and it just continues giving them more information. That is a very mature process that a couple of years ago, we had a lot of opportunity to to change. And so it's exciting to see that. And it's now exciting to see students actually matriculating through that. This is an example of what they get. You know, here's some email, it's going to go to their mobile. And and a part of Element Four Five One in that integration is we actually are texting them now. A lot of prospective students, I I hate it when people text me, but a lot of prospective students actually really prefer to get text messages and act on that information quickly on their phone, right? So we were spreading this out across multiple mediums throughout that implementation, which again is is really cool to see. Never thought I would think this was exciting, too. This is an actual strategic plan line item, and that line item was utilize data to establish targets for brand awareness and perception, marketing strategies. Those two things can be a little hard to measure sometimes, brand awareness and perception. We've partnered with ID5, they've done a lot of research for us in the past to to really start to hone in on how we want to measure that. You know, what we're looking at here is the second part of that project, which is the creating custom dashboards where we can really quickly go in and see how we're doing on those measurements. And so we have these custom dashboards, this data is all fake. We're still waiting for the results of some surveys that we've conducted, student surveys, surveys of of parents of prospective students out in the in in our marketplace, in our service area. Once those are done, and I believe we're actually completed on those, we're just waiting for analysis and then input. Where the marketing team will be able to pull up these dashboards and see these in real time. And then there's other metrics like web, anything that's related to digital advertising, that's all automated. And so that's a real-time image in any timeframe we want, which is going to make it far more efficient for us to be able to go in and just see how we're doing and what levers we might need to pull if we want to increase interest in certain areas. So this is a a pretty exciting database project that is coming to completion here in about, you know, the next month or so. Looking ahead for marketing and web, continuing brand surveys, the the surveys I just mentioned, we're really looking at replicating those yearly. So that we're continuing to look at at items like awareness, perception, how how we're doing in the marketplace, competitor analysis, things like that. And then growth programs. We've had some really good meetings with Academic Affairs. Andrea de Cosmo has set up a few of those with us. Dr. Andrea de Cosmo, apologize. And and it's been fun to work with them. What we're looking at doing here is taking a lot of the information that I just showed, that type of information, really matching it with academic information as they go through program review every fall. And then looking at what programs based off of established criteria are actually ready to grow. Some programs don't need to grow. They might have waiting lists, other factors. Some programs are really ready to grow, and we want to use a lot of data to assess that so that the marketing team, Student Affairs, academics are all kind of in lockstep together, pushing and rowing the boat in the same direction, saying, hey, here's our designated programs. Let's put a little bit more weight in our efforts behind those and see if we can actually get those programs to grow. So that's an exciting project. We've made a lot of progress on in the last year. As Academic Affairs goes through program review this fall, we'll start matching up with them and and seeing if we can get some legs on that. Communications, social media, social media is a mess right now. You'll see some really interesting numbers here. Facebook, especially when we get to X, formerly Twitter, that one, it looks worse than it is. But what you're seeing in Facebook, less engagements, less impressions, audience growth significantly down. People are just not going on Facebook anymore. That channel, especially with younger populations, is not as robust as it was. So they're losing audiences. And we follow suit with that. We're no different than everybody else, having to manage Facebook channels. The other change that Facebook has made is the monetization of what you see, right? And so back in the day, it used to be pretty organic. You would see all your friends post. If you go on there now, it's a lot of paid content. And so what you see, especially in engagements, is our organic content's not showing up as regularly on people's feed. We have to pay for that content now. And so what we hope to see in the next year, when I'm presenting this information again, is, you know, we'll adapt and we start paying for more content to show up, and then we start balancing kind of those engagements. Instagram continues to be popular. You see some of the same problems with impressions. You know, but we still get a lot of really good engagement in Instagram, and they're not, you know, shedding people as quickly as Facebook and X and Twitter, right? X and Twitter, you start to see exactly what you see in the news a little bit. You know, X is just kind of bleeding people out. Audience growth here, that's a really awful statistic, right? Negative four hundred and sixty-six percent. But it's why we don't pay too much attention to statistics. We only started with like a hundred and eighty people. And so we have very low numbers in X. It's not really a main channel for us. So so our audience growth is down because our numbers are are pretty low. So that looks a little bit more egregious than it is. TikTok, younger audiences are sitting on TikTok. Obviously, that's an area we want to be in, given our demographics. We've taken a lot of time and energy just to continue to grow that audience and and hone in on our TikTok strategy, and it's been working. And then LinkedIn, a lot of really good professional content goes in there. Really what we're seeing, the stuff that hits for us, job postings, which employee services, you know, helps with us. Information about capital projects, program and workforce updates, really that type of content. We've we've really got some traction within LinkedIn, which makes sense for who those good people on LinkedIn are. Media mentions, again, we've really focused on continuing to get earned media placements where they are just covering news for us. We're not paying for it. They're covering it because we have a lot going on. Natalie Stevens has been really working with a lot of the outlets to continue to push our our strategies out. And you see the the benefits, thirteen hundred and ninety media mentions, that's up forty-two percent from last year. Continues to be the Tribune, Reporter Herald, Fort Lepton Press, and Biz West, which isn't a surprise given our service area. So a lot of really good traction. You'll see a couple of the stories here. The other thing I think is interesting about this picture on the tablet is you'll see that story that we earned, and then you also see paid media placement for the the speaker series right there. And that's the core strategy of ours, is making sure that we're when we're in these places, right, that we're we're showing up in multiple ways and giving people multiple ways to kind of continue to interact with Ames. So it's that's an exciting picture to see. Looking ahead for the communications team, we're really looking Ames in the news, really curating all of the mentions that we get in media and making it easier for people to find out. That matters for a lot of our partners. I think about like an Alquis three D, really having a place where we can point people to, including yourselves, and say where it's right there, you can see everywhere that we're mentioned. And it's not managed via email, which is kind of how we manage it right now. And then internal communications. Really, an increased emphasis on just making sure that we're talking, you know, internally to to employees in the right mediums, the right message, the right message and tone. We really want to assess that and and make sure that we're really optimizing how we're communicating internally, because there is so much happening at Ames. We want to make sure that we've at least done our job in making sure people can get that information and know really what's going on. Events, exciting update. I messed that up. I'm gonna, I don't know what I'm doing. I'm there. Complete events team, this is the first time that the events team has been complete. And that is a very exciting thing because of some of the numbers that I'm going to show you on how many events are actually being run. We at as recent as the fall, we have been down to one person at various times running everything. And so to have that picture on the screen, this fabulous events team run by Christina Edwards there in the front, it's it's really exciting to see. It's exciting to interact with them and and the energy that events people typically bring to their jobs is is awesome to have around the marketing and communications team as well. So a full events team, I think Christine is here, congratulations. That relieves a lot of stress for her, I'm sure. Welcome Center only, a hundred and forty-seven internal events, four fewer than last year. Seventy-three external events. This does not include, I have this note. This does not include meetings, conference rooms, classes, anything like that. This is a full event. And it also is not, that is not days. Many of these events are multi-day events. That's the number of actual events externally here in the welcomes, just the welcome center. A couple of quick notes on the Welcome Center, we did a phased opening, if you remember, we limited the number of events, the type of events. We are actually at full capacity. We're out of our phased opening, and so we take everybody who who comes and 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 it's going pretty well from an external community standpoint. All other spaces, all campuses, this is, this is a big number, it's crazy. And the events team works with all of these, right? Four hundred and seventy events, that's a hundred and eighty-five more than last year. One thing to note, again, data can be interesting. This is not to, this is not to say that there's a hundred and eighty-five new events this year. We've worked really hard, the events team has worked very hard in bulking up our EMS system, our room tracking system, and ensuring that the college knows that they're here for support. And that is reflected in a lot of these numbers, that people are actually using the room reservation system, they're actually asking events for help. And and so it's not a hundred and eighty-five new events, but they are managing four hundred and seven internal events across all campuses a year for that team. So it's a pretty substantial number. This was, this is a big deal, right? Ames Speaker Series, we've been working pretty hard on this. That is starting this fall, one ticket, four great speakers. Really, for me, and when I presented on this in December, you know, I did a bit on this, but it's to me, this is really showing our mission, vision, and purpose in action right here in the Welcome Center, especially in giving our community opportunities that maybe they didn't have before. And really wanting to keep it, if you look at those price levels for all four speakers at at a at a price that many different people in our community could attend and make it palatable for them. We have four speakers coming, Dr. Amy Cuddy, December, I'm sorry, September twenty-fourth. Second most-watched TED Talk of all time on on the power of presence and and how you present yourself. Leif Babbin, he was in the Battle of Ramadi, co-authored Extreme Ownership with Jaco Willink, who's a huge name. That's a number one bestseller, former Navy SEAL, a very prominent speaker, Dr. Myron Roll. Pretty excited about this. I was thinking about Isaac. I'm like, he seems to be on Dr. Myron Roll's path, because he went from NFL all the way to neurosurgery. You know, and he's going to present, he did that in what he would say would be two percent increments of growth at a time. And he's going to come and present that method to to all of our audience. And then Ambassador Soli Solenberger, Miracle on the Hudson, he'll come talk about team leadership and growth and how to actually achieve that. So a very exciting lineup. The question's coming. I know, how many tickets have we sold? We have sold to this point, I think we've been live about three weeks, is that, it's about three weeks, and we were at two, just shy of two hundred tickets sold and four hundred committed to other entities, like we're holding some for students and stuff like that. We have fifteen hundred and eighty-three total seats that that we are looking to sell. We hear two things about this. Awesome, right? Like so cool that this is happening, and I'm really not thinking about September yet, so I'll get back to you, you know. And so we're, we're, we feel pretty good about where we're at. It's selling, we hear good things about the experience and the and the speakers that we have. And, and we're just kind of in wait and see mode and, and have some strategies in place to, you know, can, if ticket sales lag, we'll, we'll adopt our strategy and stuff. So we feel pretty good, um, and we're excited to, to obviously see them. And, uh, and, and we're, we, we have two years that we're going to give this a shot. We already have three of the, the next one booked and, and we're, we're finalizing fourth. So there's an exciting year two coming as well. So that's the speaker series and the events team has worked incredibly hard on it. Um, it gives me a lot of anxiety, uh, I, I try not to ask them for sales numbers every day, um, uh, because I, I don't, I don't like it. And so, um, but it's good, I think it's going great. Uh, what is, what are they doing? Internal catering, we're just continuing to round out the services that events offers and putting it on the same team. Internal catering's been external to that team, it's coming onto the team. And that's going to give them an opportunity to just kind of serve holistically the college for everything from internal catering to event space. Um, looking at better attendance tracking, uh, speaker series is a great example. We actually do want to know who's coming, why they're coming, what would the experience was, so that we can continue, um, to, to, you know, make those events, uh, everything they can be. So we're looking at mechanisms to continue to make our tracking a little bit better. Um, and then department relocation, uh, we have the events team, and I, I, I'm remiss not to say, the events team, that's the events team. But events here at Ames actually is comprised of the events team, uh, safety and security, facilities and operations and IT. Those four teams work together very well, um, to put on all of those events. It's not just a one-team function. One thing we've noticed is they need a space here in the welcome center to coordinate those day of events. And so the, the, the events team is actually moving to cornerstone with Markham. And we're creating kind of an event hub here where they're currently located. So the day of, we have everybody in one place communicating everything and making sure that those events go off without a hitch. And so that's what, uh, that's what, oh, I had a video and I messed it up, didn't I? I'm going to show you a quick video, it's only a minute and twenty, so we're still going to get out of here at a reasonable time. Um, this is a, what we're looking at here is one of our student testimonials. Uh, the team has worked with proper films for a couple of years down in Denver. Um, every degree page has a degree overview video, um, that is a faculty member talking about the unique elements of the degree. And we have been working to make sure that every degree page has a student testimonial so that prospective students can go and get the perspective right from the students and showcase the facilities. I, I wanted to show you this example, uh, minute forty-six, I lied to you, sorry. Uh, the, this student actually presented, he was one of the students that, uh, excellence in Ames. And so what we were able to, oftentimes if you see me taking notes, I'm not, not paying attention, like we gotta get that person on the video. And this is the result of one of those, it's an awesome video. This project has been very fun to work on, um, really just showcasing our students to the community. So I think he's going to pop that in and then I'll, I'll stand for questions, so.
My name is Toby Howell, I am pursuing a fire science associate's degree here at Ames Community College. When I first started at Ames, I was just trying to get my AMT. But after going through the classes, I found out I really enjoyed it a lot more than I thought I would. Ames gives you real training on what real firefighting looks out in the real world. With the SIM city being in place now, it gives students more opportunities to train, not feel so congested and have a lot of opportunities with different situations such as hose deployment, setting up ladders, anything like that. When you hop out of that truck with all your teammates, definitely is a little bit of adrenaline rush with the lights flashing and the loud trucks going and everybody's yelling about what to do. Get to kind of calm down in the moment and work with your team members to do your assigned tasks that you're supposed to do for that certain scenario. The faculty that are here are real firefighters, so they come in and they give you their real life experience on what to expect. It's not child's play, it's for real. They teach you how it's going to go and if you mess up, they let you know. In the firefighting world, it can be very competitive to get a job. So having this community around me gives me the motivation I need to continue to push to become a firefighter, to get my goals and see that my friends around me are getting fire jobs and that the people here want me to succeed in life. So having that community of someone who wants you to succeed makes it a whole lot better.
Super cool. And we have a lot of those and we have a lot of, uh, degree specific ones too, where we've been able to highlight our awesome faculty kind of in a similar style, just presenting the program to students and making sure that when you land on degree pages, you have multiple ways that you can take in that information, text, video, uh, you know, et cetera. So, uh, that is actually it now, thank you, and, and I'm here for any questions you have.
Any questions or comments?
First of all, thanks to you and your staff for doing an outstanding job. You should be all very proud of yourselves and you do a good job of representing yourselves as well as the institution. I have several questions. Yeah, if I go to Nikki and I'm in, this would never happen in an electrical area and I need help with a program or an event and I go to her and I ask to put something on, does it cost the department to put a program on with her? Or is that just, that's, we're, we're a team?
Generally, we're a team, especially for space, like we're a team. Uh, that's not accounting maybe for anything you might have to rent for that event, that would be an additional cost. But here, we're a team and we're not, we're not charging internal departments for those events or for the help.
Secondly, then, is there a way or a means for you to compare us to other community colleges and junior colleges with the number of social media? I don't know, contacts that they get compared to us? And then do you look and then study what they've done if they're more successful? Or keep building on what we've done that is successful?
Absolutely, it, it's, when, when I was showing those dashboards and I mentioned a few of the studies that are happening, one of those is what would be called a competitor analysis, though they might not be competitors, that's just the, the terminology for it. And what we do there to assess how, and, and if you think about awareness and perception, let's say, how we, how do you actually assess if people are aware, uh, how they perceive you? Uh, other colleges are one of the benchmarks for that. So we go look at them and say exactly what you said, how are they doing? How many posts, how many interactions and engagements are they getting on social posts? And we take that information as a part of that study and start to drive our own metrics based off of that. So we'll see the results of, of all of that here within the month.
Okay, thank you.
Well done, as always. It's amazing how everything has just increased and improved and you've done a magnificent job. Have you seen an increase in traffic with the clicks or whatever you want to call? Um, and I think I have the wrong terminology of the, the student success grant that the foundation has put out. Um, where the students are, oh, I think allowed to get, I think it's a thousand dollars the first year. Have you seen an increase?
Uh, I haven't looked at that specifically, but that's something that we could absolutely go and track back on. So let me, let me do that and I'll get you numbers. Yeah, we can actually tell how many people have landed there, what they're doing. Yeah, no, I love it.
Um, and then the other thing is I'm really excited to see you on LinkedIn more. I see you more and more on LinkedIn and I think with the workforce development, um, that will start um, bringing in even more.
Yeah.
So you guys are right on track, so.
Appreciate that, a lot of, a lot of that work, employee services is, is kind of, uh, worked with us and other people to, to really, you know, flesh out our job postings and make sure that we're continuing to be on there. And then Taylor's our, our social media, uh, manager. Uh, you know, anyone she works with wants to take her, so don't, don't tell her that as a skills public, uh, uh, so, this is phenomenal.
Yeah, wonderful job, thank you.
Thank you.
I like that the brand is known now. Uh, you guys have done a phenomenal job building off of the basic foundation to where we are today. And when you do see a billboard or you even just see Ames, people are relating. And so you guys have done a phenomenal job with that.
Appreciate that, you know, the, the first P of the four Ps of marketing is product. Um, and, and I've said this before, our product is easy to sell. You know, i- if we have so many amazing things going on here, um, it would be a tragedy not to communicate about it, not to get people to interact with it. Um, I, I'm also remiss, I, I think I have probably the easiest job on the team of coming up here and presenting what is, ends up being a lot of other people's work. You know, we have Hunter and Christina here today. Uh, the people I get to work with every day on the marketing communications team really care about Ames first and foremost. They care about marketing and communications, they're very passionate about their field. Um, and they're incredibly smart and talented. And, and that's a, that is a combination that you get, you know, i- in the way we have it right now, rarely in your career to have everybody on the team, um, kind of ha- check those boxes. So it's actually really fun to come to work, we have a great thing to communicate. Um, and then to get to work with that team and, and present what they're really working hard on, um, is truly an honor. And, and I do think they're doing phenomenal work, um, and they're doing it, um, oftentimes without having to even be told, you know, they just, they, they come up with new ways to, to continue to communicate about things. So thank you.
I just wanted, I just wanted to comment on, uh, the sophistication of your marketing programs. I've had the opportunity to work in a number of national healthcare systems. We sure could have used a marketing program like this to build our patient base. Uh, congratulations on staying at the cutting edge of marketing.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Zach. Congratulations, marketing, communication and events team. Uh, before I move on to the recognition of new employees, you have, um, by your seat, um, a magazine called Pathways to Recovery, Navigating Your Journey. You may recall last year, um, our SGA, uh, well, two years ago, our SGA president, uh, was Danielle Irwin. And then last year Danielle was vice president of, uh, an SGA. Uh, Danielle is now working with us as she goes to UNC. She, along with Erica Jones, who are, who is our executive director for, um, I don't know if I'm going to get her title exactly correct, but it's, uh, behavior and mental health, so our counseling department. They actually researched and wrote this. We are in the process, we encouraged SGA to, um, actually spend the sixty or one hundred dollars to get this copy written. This is amazing and outstanding. And again, it is driven by our students slash alums. They, um, are taking this to conferences and are utilizing this for our current students. And, um, I don't know if I can even say this, but I'm going to. I would venture to say that this would be a great tool for any individual employees and community, um, as they're uh, thinking about recovery and, and moving forward. So, um, really proud of, uh, Danielle and Erica and, um, everyone involved in this piece. It's, it's quite outstanding, so, uh, you have that. And there are others, there are more of these if you want more of the, again, right now, they're not copyrighted. Um, so we're trying to limit our dispersion of that till they are copyrighted, but, uh, it's quite exciting. So I just wanted to draw your attention there. And now recognition of new employees. Are there, uh, any supervisors who would like to introduce new employees or employees who are shifting to new positions? If you could please line up, uh, over here by the flags and Dr. Bukowski is taking the podium. I'm talking to give them time to come up. We have a whole department. The whole department.
Not all of them are mine. Oh, Chair Shock trustees, cabinet and guests, um, as you'll recall, last month down in Fort Lepton, I shared with you a high level overview of the reorganization of the SACE division into the Division of Student Affairs. I would like to take a brief opportunity now to introduce you to the folks who'll be serving in our leadership roles within that division of student affairs, starting on May nineteenth. So first is Dana Kohler, I don't have any clue, look at that. Um, Dana Kohler will assume the role of Assistant Vice President for Student Affairs and Enrollment Management, which again has oversight of admissions, financial aid, high school programs, registration and records and testing. Dana currently serves as the Executive Director of Enrollment Management, which is what we're going to change the name to admissions. Um, and joined the Ames family in July of twenty twenty, previously having worked in undergraduate admissions at the University of Northern Colorado. She holds a bachelor's in journalism from that school in Fort Collins, Colorado State University, as well as a master's in educational leadership and policy studies from the University of Northern Colorado. So Dana. Next I have Erica Jones. Uh, Erica will assume the role of Executive Director of Student Accessibility and Wellbeing with oversight of care case management, mental health counseling, student accessibility services and Arty's pantry. Erica currently serves as the Director of Care and Counseling and joined Ames in September of twenty nineteen after having worked as a clinical coordinator for the Platt Valley Youth Services Center for the Division of Youth Corrections. She holds a BA in psychology and a MA in mental health counseling and is also a licensed professional counselor in the state of Colorado. Erica. Rachel Vareto will assume the role of Executive Director of Student Success with oversight of advising the Transition Center, which also includes Ames to UNC, High School to Ames, Reischer Bridge Scholars and Transfer Services. Uh, Rachel currently serves as the Director of the Transition Center and actually joined Ames back in two thousand and five as a staff associate in the Ames Community College Foundation. She's also held several other positions at Ames since that time. She holds a bachelor's in women's studies from the University of Minnesota and a master's in higher education and student affairs leadership from the University of Northern Colorado. Rachel. Bernie is right behind me. Uh, Bernie Cordova will assume the role of Director of All-in Programs and Services with oversight of access and opportunity programs, as well as our two trio student support services grants. She'll also work alongside me for division and institution-wide efforts such as First Gen Forward, the Seal of Excellencia and other HSI activities and so forth. Bernie currently serves as the Director of our two trio student support services grants, Classic and STEM, and joined the Ames family in October of twenty twenty. Prior to that, she held several roles in student affairs at Front Range Community College. She holds a bachelor's in human services and a master's in higher education and student affairs leadership from the University of Northern Colorado. Bernie. And Shannon's back here and did not know I was going to do this. Um, but I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Shannon McCaslin. Shannon will continue to serve as ordering of students with oversight, uh, student conduct, student advocacy, student life, the mosaic, career services and veteran services. Shannon has served in a variety of roles in student affairs at Ames for the last twenty-seven years and is truly the foundation of our team and the division. For me personally, she's also a consistent partner in championing student success and an ally in setting a positive experience for our team. So not new, but thank you Shannon as well. So these five will be our new kind of senior leaders in the student affairs division. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Shock and board members, Dr. B. and guests. Um, I'm Erin Fink Smith, I'm the Executive Director of our newly branded Corporate Solutions Department. We've been existing now one year, very excited and happy for us. Um, I have two wonderful new staff members that have just been going above and beyond in our community that I'd like to introduce. First is Stephanie Stadiger. Stephanie is our business development manager here through Corporate Solutions. She'll be working out and about in the community with companies to network, collaborate, drum up new business and sell corporate trainings. She's also going to be assisting me with writing grants for the community, so I'm excited about that. Stephanie has been here at Ames in the past, she was here eight years ago, um, worked at the ATTC and was their business outreach person there, went to CSU and then we recruited her back. So Stephanie Stadiger here, business development, very excited to have her. And then we have Ms. Dreshika Ray. Dreshika is our project manager, she'll be serving our clients in the logistics area. So she does all of the hard stuff, I say. So all of the paperwork and accounting and logistics and the who, when and where of our corporate training. So could not function without her. Dreshika is, um, here, obviously she completed a bas- a bachelor's in mechanical engineering in India. She has recently completed her master's degree in engineering, leadership and innovation management. No, you can't have her for the AWIC, she's staying here. Um, she just completed, I know, I know, Dr. Spezza, um, from Penn State. So she's coming here to do project management and she is what I like to call our tech and software guru. So anything tech related, if I don't go to Markham, it's Ms. Dreshika. So she's our full-time project manager. So welcome, Dreshika and Stephanie to Corporate Solutions.
I get the privilege, um, a couple of times a year of, of speaking to new employees. And when I do that at New Employee Orientation, I always ask, how many of y'all came to Ames? And sometimes it's half the room. It's a hundred percent of the people you're going to meet next. Um, and I think that's pretty cool. So Alyssa Garcia was recently hired to be the Director of the Mosaic. She started here, uh, uh, started her education career here as a student. We got to know her because, you know, they just said I've been around 27 years. So I do remember Alyssa as a student. Uh, during the pandemic, she, uh, she completed, she went on to UNC, I think, and, uh, and, and is now enrolled at Adam State for her Master's Degree in Student Affairs. So that's pretty exciting. The most, the most interesting thing about Alyssa is she loves all the unloved creatures, the things that freak us out. She has had 25 species of tarantula in her house. Do, 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 do. I just think, whoa. But I'm gonna let Alyssa introduce her brand new team.
Hello, I'm super excited to introduce the Mosaic Program Managers. They are fantastic. So we first have Gabriela Sanchez, who is an Ames graduate. And she most recently served as the Program Coordinator, Coordinator for Finish What We Started in the Transit- Transition Center. And we have Abby Rodriguez, who is also an Ames graduate. And she also served on the Campus Activities Program Board as a student in student life and has found her way back. So that is our team and we are rocking it.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to Ames or thanks for staying with us. Uh, one small, uh, I won't, maybe not so small. I'd like to share a little bit of something I'm gonna be working on over the summer and I'm a little hesitant because it's in the development. If it may not happen, it may happen. It's, uh, we're lobbing a ball, but this is what we do and who we are, right, as innovators? So, um, a few years ago, when we heard from Alquist 3D Printing, we heard, uh, Zach Manheimer's vision, not only for his company, but certainly bringing, uh, that company to Northern Colorado, what he would like to see in the whole 3D concrete printing industry. One of the steps along the way was to pull together a consortium of folks nationally who are either business practitioners, industry researchers, educators, general managers who are actually doing the work. So yesterday I sent out a letter to, uh, 20 different CEOs of organizations across the country in those categories, inviting them to Ames Community College to start a consortium. Uh, and I threw out a couple of dates for the first retreat to kind of think and brainstorm about what this consortia could be and establish it. And basically invited them to be founding members. Uh, within less than 24 hours, I've already heard back from about a third of them, all very excited to do this. And the reason I'm hesitant is because we really need to see if there's interest. Also is the timing right? You know, the industry's really new. Are folks gonna see that this is relevant? I don't know. You know, I've thrown out a ball here, of course, working with Zach Manhy, Barnalquist, but it's truly coming from Ames Community College. So if there is interest, we'll be having our first consortium meeting either in August or September with these folks convening on our campus in the hopes that this will become an annual convening, that Ames will be the place where it convenes and that it grows over time. And potentially the vision could be, um, growing into a conference and an annual convening. So I've got big visions too about this. Uh, and like I said, I'm a little hesitant to say it out loud publicly, but I thought, you know, might as well take the chance and see. So in August, I'll let you know if it's either happening or not. But that's what I'll be working on over the summer. It could be pretty exciting for not only Ames, but certainly for Northern Colorado and Colorado as a state. So if you have any questions, you can ask me, but I probably don't have an answer. But that's what I'm working on, um, in addition to strategic planning and everything else. So that concludes the President's Report for this one.
Thank you. Lots of exciting, I don't even know what to say. I mean, it just keeps rolling. So. Um, we've come to a time, uh, for reflections, comments, accolades, if anybody has a shout out, a place to recognize accolades, um, now's the time. How about any future topics? Go ahead.
I just want to say, um, considering where we are in this world right now, um, I just want to commend everyone in the Ames family for continuing to follow your, our mission, our vision. And, um, you're doing a spectacular job. Um, so you're kind of like this, um, shining light, I always call it, um, around Northern Colorado. So I really appreciate everything you're doing. So that's what I've been meaning to say for a while.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Um, we'll do a quick assessment of the board meeting. Since we're reaching the end of the meeting, we always take a moment for self-assessment because we value accountability. Do any of you have any feedback about things that worked well in the meeting? Things that need to improve? I'll make a comment. I'll thank the board. We have a lot of complex and robust information. And I'll tell you, I think this is one of the first boards where each of you work independently, do your homework, get the information, really work through again, topics and items that we need to address. Um, and so sometimes I think it looks like the board, it's, it's like, it's just calm and it moves. But I also know personally, um, and the work that each of you are putting in. So as a chair, I would like to thank you for all the work because it makes my life so much easier and being able to, um, facilitate meetings and run the meetings. So, thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Jerry, anything else? Okay. Then I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
Thanks, Jean.
Second.
Thanks, Jeanine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.